You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the December 15th, 2022 meeting of the La Porte County Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access la port county dot org.
We're gonna call the La Porte County Council's special meeting for December 15th, 2022 at 6:08 to order. If everybody please stand for the pledge and silence your phones.
Mr. President.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you start it?
Yeah.
He announces it. Just wanna see how long you guys are staying there.
Thank Darlene for starting me.
Thank you Darlene. Roll call, Mr. Auditor.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Present.
Councilman Novak.
Present.
Councilman Cunningham.
Present.
Councilman Mullenauer.
Present.
Councilman Yagowski.
Present.
Councilman Gardner.
There you go. Yeah, I can hear you now. Yes.
And Councilman Grammerosa.
Present.
Oh, seven are present.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna go to, uh, we're gonna add.
Mr. President, I, uh, you're missing a few items off the agenda, including the approval of the agenda, so I'd like to make a few adjustments to the agenda and that way we can approve it. First of all, under roll call, let's please place approval of agenda under public comment, please put department head reports. Under new business, number three needs to be changed. Instead of requesting $3,400 for holiday pay, they have the funds, it's permission to spend not to exceed $16,400 for holiday pay, holiday time payout. Um, number four, we're going to add, La Porte County MS4, they're just transferring funds, $500 from the telephone account, I'll spare everybody the numbers, to this office supplies account. So it's just a transfer. Number five, La Porte County Animal Shelter, they need to transfer $20,000 from their spay neuter account to the part-time payroll account. And then we'll adjust, um, the appropriations when we get to it.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I believe the, does the resolution need to be added to the agenda?
So, under ordinance and resolutions, we're gonna, who put down a resolution approving transferring certain funds to resolve deficits in community corrections grant funds.
Does, do you know what resolution that would be, Mr. Auditor?
The number.
Twenty-two.
Twelve-two? We have a twelve-one already? No, we haven't done any this month.
Yeah, we, no, we haven't done, we haven't met this month, so the last one would've been eleven with the resolution to the penalty with tax, property tax.
Twelve oh one.
Okay, just to repeat, the resolution number is twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash one.
Any other corrections, additions, or is it?
I now make a motion to.
Uh, do you have to add community corrections hiring net position?
That's already on there on number one.
Okay, thank you.
Unless there's a different position.
It's a counselor position, correct? Yep.
Mr. President, before we move on, excuse me, before we move on, I believe we should make a public record that in the called council commissioners meeting, there were no commissioners present.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Are there any other corrections or alterations to the agenda for tonight? Is there a second to Mr. Rosenbaum's?
Second.
Second by Ms. Grammerosa, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Public comment, public comment is now open. Anybody from the public would like to speak? Anybody from the public would like to speak? Anybody from the public would like? Just kidding.
Jeff Coon, fifty-one eleven North Barclay, La Porte, I am La Porte County EMS captain. I wanna start off by wishing you all a very happy and safe holiday. Um, I know it's been a rough last year and a half for all of us dealing with COVID and a whole bunch of other things, dealing with the pay raises. You've had an enormous task above you, and I know it's not easy, it's not difficult, there are so many different, everyone's asking for something and everyone's asking for more. You have really bolstered us at EMS, and I can speak for the majority of the employees. We have appreciated immensely the amount of attention you have given us over these last couple of years, not just with pay, but with funding for other necessary things. And a lot of people don't ever get to hear that or see that, but we really appreciate the attention and, uh, the added raises that you have been putting on to us, and it's, and it's actually, um, working out well and attracting new and more employees. So it's actually doing what we hoped it was going to do. But I'm here tonight to talk about four gentlemen, and I'm here tonight to talk about the sheriff's garage maintenance guys. I've been with the county for about thirty years now. Um, I've known them professionally for about twenty-five years. Um, I've known all of them through this time, even though they've had a recent one over the last couple of years. They've been really overlooked, and I'm asking you to give them one more look. They do an extraordinary job out there. I work with Dan and Sam exclusively, for the most part, with the ambulances on various different things. You know, a lot of people just think it's just an ambulance is going in there for brakes or tires or whatnot. The detail that all four of these, of these gentlemen do at the garage is second to none. Um, when they come in there, they go through this vehicle like it needs everything. So when it goes back on the road, it goes in for a simple oil change, they're looking at the lights, they're looking at other components, and it's not an easy vehicle to fix. It's a over $300,000 vehicle that has various different electronic components inside that it, we couldn't even take to our local Ford dealer to fix, or even, even a specialty dealer around here to fix. These guys jump in and fix any needed thing at any time. They've come in at night to change a tire at the base because it had a flat, or it ran over some glass or some debris, and never have complained one bit. And, but hearing them the last couple of years, I, I feel bad for them. You know, when I come in there, they hear the raises that we get, or, you know, the things that we're getting, and, and they're not. And I'm not saying that you're not overlooking them for any reason, but they, they truly need another look. Um, you know, when these vehicles go the speeds that they go, I feel very safe when I'm in that vehicle. There are many times I'm not secure in that vehicle, and so moving around, taking care of the patient, I know it's safe. Years ago, I was involved in a rollover crash. Um, and, you know, various different factors came into it. It wasn't really the mechanics, it was a lot with the manufacturer of the ambulance, but a lot of the things that they do on a daily basis affect those abilities. And, you know, they go above and beyond. When we did have an ambulance that was damaged a couple of years ago, they literally picked away at all the parts on it before the scrapper came so they could use it for other things. They use their time and their energy and their resources to the best ability to the county at the most cost-efficient way, and they do not try to, you know, stay longer, abuse overtime, or anything that I've ever seen in my twenty-five years. And so I just ask you tonight, as you're looking at it over today, tomorrow, next week, next month, please take a look at them. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other public comments? Any other public comments?
Just state your name, sir. My name is Deion Campbell. I'm a lifelong La Porte County resident and a proud American, and I greet the elected officials tonight. Um, I think you're gonna hear a common thing tonight. Um, I'm here to advocate for all of the employees of the Juvenile Services Center. Um, as some of you know, I recently retired from the Michigan City Police Department, uh, but because I love my community so much, uh, recently taken a job at the Juvenile Services Center because I love the youth and I love working with the youth. And to be honest with you, I was a little bit appalled at what I saw when I went there. Um, maybe twenty-five to thirty years, I worked at the La Porte County Jail, and I know that the work that they do at the Juvenile Services Center is very, very similar to that. And when I looked at that facility, I was very, very disappointed because it reminded me of what I left almost twenty-five to thirty years ago. Um, I'm a proud La Porte County resident, and I think that we have to value all of our employees. Um, I think that this has to be a place where people can say that I worked for the La Porte County Government and be proud about that, um, not asking for anything above and beyond, but I think that all employees here should have competitive wages. Um, as you know, most entities in the times in which we live are dealing with two issues. That's recruitment and retention. And people will follow the dollar. If you can't pay them what they need because of the lack of employees, then they're going to go elsewhere. And I think that the La Porte County Juvenile Services Center is no different. Um, what I'm seeing now is typical of, of every other entity, where we've got dedicated, hard-working employees who are working sixteen hours just to cover the basic minimums of staffing. They've been doing that throughout COVID and up until today, and it has been very, very taxing upon them. And I think that when it comes to raises, that we have to value our employees who are dealing with one of the most important aspects of our society, and that's our juveniles. And they're dealing with the most troubled aspect, um, of society. The Juvenile Services Center has a terrible narrative that has been written about it. I've heard all the complaints about how they don't do anything there, and I think that that's a tragedy, that that narrative has been written, and it has to be changed, um, uh, immediately. Uh, they've done some things to remove our juveniles away from incarceration to services, but there are multiple things that are going on in, inside of that Juvenile Service Center, and I think that the public really needs to know about it. The issue is, because of the sensitivity of what goes on there, we can't broadcast what goes on, on a daily basis. Inside of that Juvenile Services Center, you have youth specialist workers, you have counselors, you have a receptionist or an intake center, you have community supervisors, you have a, a Nova team there and also in Michigan City, and you also have teachers. The thing that I don't think that people understand is that all of these workers are also doing the work of youth specialist workers because of the low staffing. When they're done with their normal duties, all of them are going above and beyond doing the same thing that a youth specialist worker does, and that ser, that center would shut down if they didn't go above and beyond what they were supposed to do and help out. They have really been doing multiple tasks for a very, very long period of time, and it's almost insulting to them when they see everyone get raises and there's disparity, even with our own entity where some may get this amount and some may get another amount. What I'm asking you, our esteemed elected officials, to consider and make sure that we value these workers that are hardworking. Uh, there's a tough road ahead, we've got to get more people in there working. Um, juveniles are different this day. Those that are coming in there are much more violent than they've ever been. And also, just as our society is dealing with mental health issues, those that are inside the juvenile, inside the center have some very severe mental health issues. I've been there approximately a month, and we have had five people injured. We've had someone get a broken nose, we've had a concussion, and we've had three other people, uh, who have been injured, and that's all of those that work at the Juvenile Services Center because they're all doing practically the same job, and that's very, very difficult for us and, and which I believe is commensurate to what they do at the jail, but it's, you could argue that it's more difficult for us because we're using handle with care. We are not getting overly physical with the juveniles there because we have to look at them as if they're our own children and not as if they're adults, and there's a delicate balance that we have. Uh, so what I'm asking you tonight is to reconsider and to make sure, because there's been some rumors floating around that no, not all of the workers at the Juvenile Services Center are going to get equal amounts of pay, and I'm, I'm, I just want to bring this to your attention. I wanna highlight what's really going on there. I've got multiple years in law enforcement, and I've actually had to get into physical altercations. I've been there thirty days and gotten into two physical altercations, and every one of these workers have been dealing with that for over two years. Please keep this in mind when you make that decision, and put value on those that take care of what's the most important to us. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, and congratulations on your retirement. Just, I just wanna, I just wanna clarify on the two people that just got up and spoke, so that the, the sheriff's mechanics and the juvenile center, the disparity in the, in the raises. There are people that are classified, so there, there are comments or there are Pats, and, and that's per the pay scale. When you're in that, we cannot, because there's other employees in other departments that are in that same scale, we cannot raise you out of that scale. Now, so there's a lot of people in that boat. Our intention was to give everybody there the same raise, but due to, due to some regulations and restrictions, we couldn't do that. Just like at the, at the sheriff's garage, they're maxed out on that level. So we're, we're working, and we just got the salary study, and so we're working. So this will continue into next year, and we're looking at ways to increase those things and be able to do the things we need to do within the letter of the law and be able to do it. That's, that's what the restriction is. It's not, there isn't anybody up here that wouldn't, wouldn't take care of the mechanics in the garage, the, the drivers out at the, um, highway department or another one, and, and over at the juvenile center. So, um, we hear what you're saying, and stay tuned. That's all I can tell you. So.
How do you change the regulations?
What's that?
How do you change the regulations?
It's, it's a very complicated thing, so. I know, you gotta come up to the podium if you wanna. I know, it, it's something we're working on with, with legal counsel and even downstate and everywhere else, so.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cunningham.
It might be, um, when we, uh, have our employees go before the job reclassification, it might be that we have to do some reclassification.
And, and that's what I talked to Mike about, um, just before the meeting was, is it might be able to do that. With the highway department, they have room to do that. And that's one of the things that we're looking at, is possibly bumping them from an LTC three to an LTC four or five. The mechanics in the sheriff's department are LTC fives. They're maxed out. We looked at adding the number six. It, that, we were recommend, it was recommended to us that you don't wanna do that, because La Porte County already has too many different levels. So we're looking at every option we can to try and make this all happen. So, I, so, some of it is gonna be reclassification and recommendations for certain ones that have the room within that, uh, level.
We're gonna have a workshop in January.
We'll have a workshop in January.
Can I go ahead and go?
You sure can.
Okay, I'm Melissa Barker. I work at the Juvenile Center. Um, how long would that, I mean, you said you were gonna have a workshop in January, but like, how long would that take for us to recategorize those that are being left out of the additional raise that we're supposed to be getting?
First of all, go ahead.
First of all, in the county, as long as I've been here, we've never, ever had to give raises on that type of thing. We got raises for people that have been reclassified, people that, that have come because their jobs have changed from now on, or we just gave three, five, like ten percent raises. The problem is, once we got involved in this, it became a problem of sticker with, with, with everybody, other employees. We're, we're basically under a contract to all the employees, we pay them, so we, we, we don't wanna get ourselves into a jeopardy-type situation. So with that, we, last, this last fall here, we asked for a, um, a, um, study to be done. We just received that late November. So, of course, in the November, end of the year, we don't have enough time to try to get that, get all that in at one time. So we said in January we would go, go through that. We went through some individual situations that we could fix, but those are ones we couldn't fix. So there's a, it's not that we don't want to, it's just that you're, that everybody's, it was under umbrella before, and now we're trying to pull those individuals apart. It's a very complicated process, and that's what we're gonna do in January, is to try to go through those type of things.
And that, and that's why we gave the ten percent to everybody to make up as much gap as we can now, and then there's some that we, we still need to go in, and we, we talked this morning, this afternoon, that there's still some gap in there that we need to go in and fix first of the year.
Now, is there a possibility that they could get a raise within the year instead of waiting till the end of the year? Because that's not fair.
So if we do something in January. It would, it would go into effect then.
It would go into effect in January.
Right.
A lot of stuff can be reclassifications, reclassifications, we can do differently. They're not, it's not a wage, it's not as that we're taking this out of a budget for your department.
Yeah.
There'd be reclassification that we.
It's just the shock value of finding out in October that we're all supposed to get fifteen percent at the Juvenile Center, and then finding out yesterday that only seventy percent of us are getting the fifteen percent, and the thirty people that are being left out and only getting ten. And that's not fair to those workers that have been doing the exact same job that we all are.
And it, and I, trust me when I tell you, it wasn't anybody up here's intentions for not everybody to get that when we voted on that, but it was things that come out when we go to do it, and they go to apply those, because if, what's your classification?
I'm a poll position. So I got the fifteen percent, but that's, you know.
Let's say if somebody else is a comet, a comet three. If we give all the comet threes out there a fifteen percent raise, then everybody in the county gets fifteen percent. We have to, we have to, that has to go across the board. So that's what, so it might be a reclassification out there, it might be a reclassification at the highway. We're looking at every option we can to get it done.
Okay.
We just ran out of time.
Yeah, for the sake of my coworkers that are not being, they're being left out, in my, my honest opinion. Um, I hope that it's done as fast as possible, because, I mean, it's, it's already difficult enough to do our job, and we feel very unappreciated and undervalued. And that goes across the whole board. And, and I've been there for thirteen years, and it's very difficult some days to walk into that building.
I, I appreciate all you guys do. Uh, there's a lot of departments in this county. I appreciate your jobs. I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna do the things that you have to do, and I was a firefighter, and it's the best job in the world, Mr. Campbell, by the way, um, just so you know, being a police officer. Um, but I wouldn't EMS you guys, um, you know, probation, juvenile services, you guys, I commend you for everything you do. It was not our intention to leave anybody out, and we're trying to fix it.
I just, I just hope for their sake that it's done as soon as possible.
I agree.
I just don't want it to be like.
We normally don't even.
Long and drawn, because I know how long this process takes.
And if we did something, it would be when we do it. So it doesn't have to wait till the end of the year.
Okay.
So, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We think we need to understand, when she says there's like thirty getting left out, it could be three hundred across the county.
It's, it's, it's thirty percent, so it's like.
Thirty percent.
Fifteen, fifteen.
Okay. Of their.
So she meant percentage, not numbers. All right, and, and let's look at it, then, across the county, it might be fifteen or twenty percent.
Right.
That's on that vote.
Hi, um, line row counselor, reception center supervisor, and just to bounce off of what, oh, Mr. Deion was, he's awesome. He's just awesome to, and to work with. And, uh, Ms. Melissa, we've been coming to the meetings, and you had mentioned about having to reclassify or work with the mechanics and everything. Nothing was mentioned about the Pats at the Juvenile Center. So when we watched, and so you guys said fifteen percent, we're all like jumping up for joy, and then the, the rug got thrown out from us. If we would've known this, like, the mechanics and everything have known this for months that you guys are gonna be working on this. We've heard it. We did not hear that then. We heard juvenile center fifteen percent. So what would you think? You would think everybody in that building gets fifteen percent. And our job descriptions are a little different than everybody else's in the county because I don't sit in my office and just have a kid come to me. I'm working on that unit. I'm playing nurse now, 'cause we don't have a nurse. Uh, we have, have people work it when we were short on kitchen, working in the kitchen. I trained to do the handle with care. I'm in the restraints with these kids that have spina bifida and everything. So all my staff, every staff in there, the teachers, it's, so when you said juvenile center, that's us. And we were so proud. Then yesterday we got kicked. That's what we're saying. We didn't know. We needed to know before yesterday.
Mr. Yagowski.
I hope you understood, or maybe you did not, and I'm not trying to, to talk down on the situation. We did not know. In thir, in some thirty, forty years, like, we've talked to people, been in the county government for a long time. Money's never, this money that we got from different funds never happened before.
Right.
I hope you understand that we thought it would be just as easy to, to, to classify, for example, your group or the highway who has to have a special license to, to do that job. We didn't know. So with that, we'll, we'll, we'll claim the same ignorance. We did not, no, we don't, nobody did. We, when you came county council, there was not a county council one-on-one class.
Right.
You took. So in all the years that I've been here, and Terry Gardner's up there, he can tell you the same thing. We never knew about something like this, 'cause we never came across the extra money that we're able to spend now.
And when we, and when we approved the fifteen percent, we didn't sit up here and go, wait a minute, we got two comments and three polls, and we got this, oh wait, how's that gonna? We thought it was, until, until it comes back from payroll that says, hey, wait a minute, wait a minute, this doesn't work. And it was just, and the same thing out of community corrections. So, you know, these are things.
They seem to have known before we did that they were not, everybody wasn't gonna get anything, you know, that.
The, the intention was always, everybody was gonna get it, and we did, we don't know. I mean, it could, they asked, and yeah, we applied it to everybody.
Yeah, it just, the juvenile center people, we just feel like we are always the last to know on things with us. So we hope that you can get things fixed quickly and everything, and within a month. That would be awesome, 'cause that would be a great two thousand and twenty-three to help us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Anybody else from the public? State your name, sir.
No raise for you.
You don't even work for the county.
I work for the state. I only got five percent, so. Mr. President, members of the council, uh, good evening, Alan Stevens, uh, chairman of La Porte County Republican Party. I'll be quick, just a, a little bit of information. Uh, Councilwoman Grammerosa has tendered her resignation effective twelve thirty-one twenty-two at eleven fifty-nine and fifty-nine seconds, and I've accepted it. Uh, and as such, we'll be holding a caucus in this very room, uh, Saturday morning at ten. It's open to the public. I would encourage, uh, any of the, the council members, if you wanna come and watch how the sausage is made, uh, come on down. Uh, it'd be a good time. We all know nobody's doing anything, uh, this Saturday morning before Christmas, so this would be a fun way to spend it. We've got five candidates, Adam Karanka, Tom Fath, Brett Kessler, Deb Vance, and Ron Schaefer. So, uh, in a perfect world, we'd get the caucus done in about an hour, but, uh, bring your lunch, it's gonna be a long morning.
I just, I just gotta ask, is that Polish sausage? I had to ask, I had to ask.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Anybody else from the public? Anybody else from the public? Anybody else from the public? Public comment is now closed.
Mr. President, before we move on, uh, could I, at this point in time, Mr. Yagowski and Mr. Gardner have been here twenty years, and I haven't been here that long, but in light of the fact that we have this problem and we're working on it, we should also recognize the fact that in twenty-year history, I don't think we've ever given a ten percent raise across the board. We went a lot of years where we didn't give anything.
Right.
So, you know, it's, life's never fair completely, and we're gonna keep working on it. But we also have to remember that everybody, including our part-time people, got a ten percent pay raise. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to, um, department heads, are there any department heads that would like to speak? What could you possibly have?
Well, I'm gonna reiterate everything. Michael Callahan, Assistant Director of Juvenile Services Center, I'm gonna reiterate everything that my colleagues have said. Um, I will point out that in the PAT and com, in their job descriptions, it does read, if I may, incumbent may be exposed to irate hostile individuals and have to respond to situations involving potential physical harm to self and others. So they, they know, they, they're out there doing the work. And it's not just when we're short-staffed, they're always out there doing the work. The, and I believe that they, I, I just wanna say it because I wanna say it. They all deserve the fifteen percent. They deserve it. We've all been out there and gotten hurt. We've all been out there and gotten hurt. I remember telling you myself, I, I've been to the hospital, I probably had a concussion, but they didn't do a CT on me when the kid hit me in, in the eye with his head. So that was fun.
Right.
And, and like, like they, they've all said, and the, the, these people have been there for years. They're dedicated. They want to be there. And it, and it was a kick in the pants when, when we heard this. So I hear what you're saying. I hope that you will come to res- resolution on it quickly. And, um, this is not the last time you will see me. So I, I will be around. Now, on to other business. I wanted to let the council know that as of January first, I have the paperwork here. For every kid that will be in shelter care, that's the, the other side of the building, not secure, we will be receiving per diem of one thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and seven cents. That's up from seven hundred and seventy-six dollars per kid per day. So we have three kids there right now. If it was at the new rate, um, and all this money goes back to the council, to the general fund. The council would have made fifty-seven hundred and twenty-one dollars today. So that's per kid per day. We are cer- currently servicing twenty-five kids. There are nine kids living in the, or, yeah, there, there are six kids living in the building right now. Five come every day for day reporting in Nova and then five go to Michigan City for Nova, which is our day-evening reporting program. We have two scheduled to start day reporting after the first of the year when the, the news, new session starts. and I'll come back up when we're talking about the other thing. So I just, I appreciate your, your comments. I appreciate you letting me speak. I appreciate you letting my people speak. Yes, sir.
So, sorry, I'm waiting for you.
I'll call in.
He didn't tell me. He, he's got to do that.
I run that.
He's got to do that.
Mr. Yagowski.
See how that works?
Very well.
Yes, sir.
Just kidding. Okay.
I talked to the state rep.
Yes, sir.
Because I was still, but, you know, this whole thing, the food would, would make it, if it went away, would make this job a lot easier in some respect and not this complicated because of the amount of staff you have to have just cook food for people. So when I talked to him, he says that, we, we, we mentioned that the school system doesn't like the idea they have to supply food. He says they do have to supply food. So if we put requests in for the school system, because you have, whether they're in there or in that, in school, they are required to give the food away to, or if we pick it up or whatever. But we are, we, they, we can ask LaPorte or Michigan City for that.
I, I have, I have asked them and they say that they don't have the staff to do it.
Well, the, the other, the other. Conversation, but I, 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 yes, yes, sir. It's just humorous. I know the school system very well. They don't have the staff. That's just a humorous conversation, but.
The other thing is, how are we going to feed the kids on the weekends, holidays, and in the evenings?
Understand, but we got to work on one thing at a time.
Sure.
So they are required to supply children if you have, if you have, because that's the same basis whether they happen to be just incarcerated at the time or happen to be in the school system. So they said, he said that we could demand that type of stuff. So I, I, I don't explain what we can do on weekends. Weekends could be some simple as that we could go and pick it up from a dozen, if we have the rest, if they tell us what they need, we can get that from a restaurant on a weekend and still end up being cheaper than supplying a lot of people.
So to, to, just to give you some knowledge here, we have a set of requirements we have to meet for their nutritional requirements.
That's my point, that's my point.
I, I understand that, but not, not every restaurant is going to be able to make those requirements and be able to pay for that.
I've talked to some of the, LaPorte, LaPorte actually said they would be glad to make special food because that would be, if they knew that you were coming, they would be glad to. Some local restaurants right in town, they would, that would be fantastic for them. They would have, if I have to make twenty, so orders of a nutritional value of what you're saying, they could do that.
So the, the food issue really, and we discussed this at the last meeting, had, has been pretty much solved. We have two full-time cooks. They're cooking the food, the, and quite honestly, at the edge, at the budget hearing, sir, I would rather you took money out of the food budget than the maintenance budget because like Mr. Dionne said, the, the building is not in great shape.
Like I said, I can find some things maybe to transfer that money if I could find a better way of doing it. And I, they, they mentioned it. I'm just giving an idea because I've talked to a couple legislators, said that, that you can demand food. They are not short-staffed at Michigan City or LaPorte School System.
That's what I, that's what I've been told.
Three, if it was a weekend, we could, we could find a way, nutrition wise, you're going to restaurant will, will be glad to cook just for you for that particular day to help you for the weekend over some. But I'm just looking for ideas. So you take, that's what we do. That's what the council does.
I hear you.
And I looked, that money, that money can be well spent in the areas you're talking about.
And it's not only just the food, it's also personnel. Two cooks, forty thousand a year, eighty thousand dollars. Plus benefits. So that's, and did you, um, I know the last time you reported on that, or I asked you, did you go to the superintendent?
I did not go to the superintendent. I, I, I'm not going to lie to you.
Because, you know, just like Mr. Yagowski said, you go to a staff member, they're not going to say, oh, yeah, we can do it. It's not them.
I called the head of food service. And I had, I had the name on my pad before. I gave it to you.
Okay. Try superintendent.
Okay.
They're just looking at any and all ideas to.
I'll be willing to help. I'll sit down with you. That's, that's absolutely right.
All right.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
Any other department heads?
Good evening, Darlene Hale, LaPorte County IT. Um, I just want, have a few things I want to say. I agree with Mr. Cunningham. You know, I've been an employee here for a very long time. I've been through the no raises for many years. And I can tell you that we all appreciate the ten percent and we look forward to talking in January about other positions. I just want to wish you all, uh, happy holidays and wish Mr. Garner, you know, the best in his retirement. And I've known him for a very long time and, you know, hopefully he'll keep in touch.
Yeah, thank you, Darlene.
Thank you, guys.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other department heads? Any other department heads?
Mister, Mister Novak, I, um, apologize. I, I've got a really terrible connection, so I can't tell if you put me on the agenda or if I should still ask for my transfer during department head province.
We put you on the agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's what I thought, but I can't hear very well, so.
Okay. We'll call on you here in just a few minutes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Amanda Laner's Health Department. Um, a couple of quick updates. Our ceiling did get completed. It's fabulous. It's bright. You can see it and maybe we can see too much now. But, um, thank you again for letting us use our budget, our non-reverting funds to be able to complete that project. Uh, we had our first, if you remember, I came back to you in February, March to talk to you about the, um, femur program, the fetal infant mortality review team. Um, we did receive funds from the Healthcare Foundation in June. We were able to hire a coordinator, Peggy Rose, nurse practitioner. And we had our first meeting this month. So that's moving forward. Hopefully we'll be able to, we're reviewing thirteen, starting with twenty twenty deaths. Um, reviewing those starting in January and we'll hopefully be able to pull good information from that to be able to send back to the community action team to be able to, um, help prevent more babies from dying, have, have healthier children and mothers in LaPorte County. I don't envy your jobs at all, especially this time of year with budget, but I want to get my two nickels in there, the last chance probably for the year. Um, I did re-meet with the job committee. Um, and I did board on those recommendations. I didn't know where we stood with those, if those recommendations were going to be um, granted this year and put into effect for next year, or are we, um, for January, are we on that list?
They're part of the group that we're reviewing for next month.
So that's going to be held off until January?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Because they were part of the salary study.
Okay.
So.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Yagowski.
Because I've been involved on, on different occasions, our, our report card for, for county.
Yep.
Come, it's a rolling number, so it takes a lot to re- to make that go up because it is not simple grade like we're looking at. Still great.
Correct.
So what, what do you feel we're able to do if we, the improvement of that, because that, that, the public does see that number.
Mm-hmm.
We, we are very low, I'm sorry, we are very low in the standards of our communities around us.
We are. LaPorte County is in the bottom.
Yes.
And that's not where we want to be.
Indiana's in the bottom.
Indiana's in very at the bottom.
And we're at the bottom of the bottom.
Not at the very bottom of the bottom. We're down there. Yeah, out of ninety-two counties, we're seventy-two.
So we're trying to, we're trying to get this number up. Is that what we're?
Exactly.
The whole report card grade, because it is important how that gets represented in the earth.
Absolutely.
Oh, one hundred percent. And that is one of the things is fetal infant mortality, um, maternal health, uh, availability of services, um, education is a big thing. Um, and getting mothers, expectant mothers, even before they know they're pregnant, be able to have, to be healthy. Also immunization rates. And again, just the ability to have access to insurance and healthcare.
And number of mothers that smoke while they're pregnant.
The numbers is, for LaPorte County is, we're above state average, above national average. So, yes.
It's not above average that you want to be.
No, exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. So there is, I don't know if you've been following along with, um, Governor's Commission, um, that he pulled together to look at public health in the state of Indiana to see how to get it back up to where it needs to be. And one of that is giving us a large amount of money from the state funds, um, every year to fund us eighty percent. And that is on the list of activities um, that we would have to support more within the county to get those numbers down.
Right.
So.
And Peggy's a good person. That's a good choice.
She is. She, we're very fortunate to have her. Yes.
Thank you, Amanda. Any other department heads? Any department heads on Zoom? Any other department heads? Oh, all right. Department head's now closed. Move on to, um, ordinances and resolutions, resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash one.
Mister President, I can make a motion to read by title only.
Second. Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum, by title only. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Those opposed?
He said aye.
Yeah, I, I get it. All right, by title only.
This is a, this is a resolution approving transferring certain funds to resolve deficits in Community Corrections Grant Funds, resolution twenty twenty-two dash one.
Guy, do you want to speak on this? Briefly?
So, sure. So apparently the Community Corrections Grants have been in the deficit since two thousand and nineteen. And, uh, there've been audit exceptions because of the deficits. And the Indiana Department of Corrections contacted the head of Community Corrections along with the SBOA and said that we need to clear up our balance sheets and get this, uh, money off the books showing a deficit. And so, uh, the way that we chose to do it after conferencing with county attorney, uh, folks from Community Corrections, yourself, myself, was that we're transferring funds from the LIT Fund for two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars and change, uh, to the two grant funds that are deficit to zero it out. So hopefully we'll not get an audit exception for the year two thousand and twenty-two. And then we'll be ready to go. So this is really a paper transfer because those funds have already been spent.
Great.
Any questions?
Does anybody have any?
Well, we, we would just say that we, we worked with you on this and we were in that conference and we, we're still not perfectly comfortable about all the, the dotting, the i's and the crossings, the t's and some aspects of it, whether it's a, actually, uh, an appropriation of a transfer and a few other aspects, but we'll, we'll, we'll certainly, uh, seek to get um, our, our clarifications on that. This, this is all come to a head very quickly and so we appreciate that and respect that. Um, um, then we'll seek to have the council do its duty here as it sees fit and hopefully it'll all be fine. If not, we'll just, uh, have to reapproach it.
And I, and I, I appreciate that, but we did have, uh, you know, a financial representative there who believed that it was just a transfer because there was not additional funds that needed to be appropriated. But if we, if we do need to appropriate the funds, we can, we can get it. We can get an answer from somebody. We can publish it and appropriate the funds, but then we'll still get the audit exception for two thousand and twenty-two. So we'll get it cleared up one way or another.
Sounds good. Great.
Any other questions or come, oh, Mister Rosenbaum?
I just want the public to know that the amount of the transfer of funds is two hundred and seventy-six thousand ninety-one dollars and ninety-two cents.
Mister President, Mister Yagowski. Motion to approve, LaPorte County Council Resolution Number twenty twenty-two dash twelve one. Motion by Mister Yagowski.
Well, second.
Second by Mister Rosenbaum. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Moving on to new business, consider approval of council president's authorization to hire replacement position for LaPorte County Community Correction Counselor Position.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Mister Rosenbaum, second by Mister Cunningham. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Yeah. Next one is LaPorte County E nine one one is requesting to have two assistant shift supervisors added for a total cost of four thousand and, um, four thousand dollars. And these are, it's basically, it's a, it's a rank. It's not a, it's not a new employee. It's, it's a, a level of supervisors in, within there, so.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Mister Rosenbaum, second by Mister Cunningham. Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Next item is LaPorte County Juvenile Services requesting permission to spend sixteen thousand four hundred?
Not to exceed sixteen thousand four hundred.
For, for holiday time payout for accrued holiday time over five days. Um, and it's what it is, is they're short-staffed, so a lot of these employees weren't able to take holidays, take time off. Uh, we've had to do this same thing with Community Corrections and, and fix some things, so. Um, what's your pleasure?
Probably want to take that.
Permission to spend. Mister President, motion to approve, permission to spend, uh, to expand the, the amount that. Motion by Mister Yagowski.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Grammerosa. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All right.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, next one is MS four transfer. Nicole?
She's dropped off. Motion to approve.
I'm here. Thank you. I just need to make a transfer from my office supplies budget, which is a two hundred level account to my, no, I'm sorry, from my telephone account, which is a two hundred level account, to my office supplies budget, which is a three hundred level account, uh, uh, to cover a claim, um, that came in. Yeah.
And it's five hundred?
It's five hundred dollars to cover them. I think the claim is just under five hundred. It's like four ninety or something like that.
Okay. Thank you. Is that a motion, Mister Gardner?
That's a motion.
All right, all right.
Second.
Who seconded it? Mister Cunningham? Motion by Mister Gardner and seconded by Mister Cunningham. Any other questions or comments on that one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Next one is LaPorte County Animal Shelter. Thank you. Requesting to transfer twenty thousand dollars to cover part-time.
From spay neuter account to part-time account.
So that's from their donation account to the part-time account.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mister Mullenhour. Mister Gardner liked the seconded by Mister Gardner.
Yeah, I can do that.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Thank you. We got to get you in the minutes a little bit here, Terry.
Yeah, nobody'd ever know, right?
You didn't hand it. You need to hand it to the event.
Yes, yeah.
Mister President, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda. There's an item that was omitted when we first made the first set of corrections. Uh, the LaPorte County Highway Department Deputy Salary to Increase for five thousand dollars. So that's a motion to amend my motion and then I believe.
That would be item number six.
Six, and then, um, I forgot who seconded my motion. We need to.
For the agenda originally?
Me.
Mrs. Grammerosa.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is Highway Department Deputy Increase of five thousand dollars.
That's a, like, it's chief deputy, right?
Chief deputy.
Chief deputy.
Is that what I said?
No, you just. I said just deputy.
Actually, it's general foreman. Actually, it's general foreman. General foreman, there you go.
Make a motion for a general foreman increase for $5,000.
Microphone, make that motion for $5,000 for the general foreman position.
I'd like to second it.
Motion by Mr. Yagelski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. Any other questions or comments?
When, when did this, how did this just start? I mean, I.
We've been talking about it, it's, it was going back to our agenda days, because we gave a raise to, to the department head. And now that, and now with the other raises going in, he's actually below pay of his employees that he's kind of working underneath him, except for, go ahead.
The request actually came last month for a $10,000 bump in there, and so, that's where, that's where it was, so.
It's just going to put that person at 85%?
This department is, we have many departments that aren't that. This department is just general foreman position.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is LaPorte County Commissioners Requesting Additional Appropriation from Riverboat ARP General or Emergency Reserve does not qualify, so we're not even going to add that. Liability, you want to do these together, since we had a workshop? So, if I'm correct, Mrs. Graham Rosa, the first one would change from 305 to 55?
To 55.
So, $55,000 for liability claims, $55,000 for professional consulting services, and professional service account of $75,000.
Total is 185, as Mrs. Graham Rosa noted before.
But, they also have one more claim that was going to come in at like 25.
52.
52, so.
The idea was to make it 188, if I remember.
Yeah, 188.
188?
I'm sorry.
Do you want to make that motion, Mrs. Graham Rosa?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 188, $188,000 to the commissioners to balance off their accounts.
Riverboat, or?
Motion by Mrs. Graham Rosa.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item is LaPorte County Superior Forest Requesting Additional Appropriation from Riverboat ARP or General Fund for bailiff account in the amount of $3,752.61.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Molenhour.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Graham Rosa. Any questions?
Yes, at a general, or?
Which count?
Three, so, general.
General's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any council comments?
Terry, I just come in and hired, elected in the same time, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Gardner, my friendship's been, with you has been awesome. You've always given me a time of day, once every election, you didn't care about party lines.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the friendship and your duty. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry, for all your years of service and your friendship, Mr..
Yeah, I agree. It's been a pleasure with everybody. I've had the opportunity to work in the LaPorte County government. And sitting back here, I know my own hair was silver, but I didn't realize how many silver foxes are on that council. You guys all look pretty good, so.
My driver's license says it's blonde, so.
Connie, I have to leave you out of that one, though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Mr. President.
A pleasure.
Mr. President, if I may, Mr. Gardner, the best wishes to you. You were my liaison, and you always stop by to visit and see what we need to deal with. You're an excellent listener, and you truly cared about LaPorte County. I appreciate you very much, and I wish you the best. My office, my staff wishes you the best in your, in your retirement.
Yeah, thank you, Tim.
Definitely. Mr. Rosenbaum?
Yeah, and, I mean, thoughts go to you, Terry, but I also want to have thoughts to somebody who served for us for only two years and is now moving on to be a commissioner. We wish her the best. We would love to work with you hand in hand in making the county even better, and we look forward to it. So, thank you for your time with us, and best wishes on moving forward.
Thank you. And Terry, I'd like to thank you as well, you know, thank you for taking those late-night calls when I had questions. I did appreciate our conversations. And I enjoyed working with all you guys, but I don't think I want to miss you. I'm going to still have to work with you guys.
Good challenges.
Yes.
Yeah, no, well, I won't say that. Happy holidays to all, and we do appreciate every employee.
Every, every.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to all the employees out there. Thank you for everything that you've done this year. I know that this has been very trying on all of us. I mean, us trying to figure out the budget, but you guys have been very, very patient with all of us.
We're trying to do what's, trying to do what's right.
Yeah, this has been, I, you know, I've only served on two years here, and it's been very tough going through the whole COVID thing, and maybe, you know, sometimes we didn't always say the right thing, but our heart was always in the right place. And I just wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and thank you all for everything that you do.
Definitely. Mr. Cunningham?
Echo Councilwoman Graham Rosa's comments there, and I want to close with something I just saw a few days ago, and I thought was very appropriate for the season and for the governmental meeting. It says, "The definition of Christmas is when kids ask Santa for things and adults pay for them. Definition of deficit spending is when adults ask the government for things and their kids pay for them." Thank you.
Wow. That was very holiday statement there, yeah, true. And I'd just like to recognize two people. First of all, Marika won the best holiday dressed. Apparently, that memo didn't go out to the rest of the people here tonight, but kudos to you. And if John Boyd thought he was going to get out of here free, he's mistaken. So, to Sheriff Boyd, thank you for everything, for your friendship, for your dedication. We thanked you last month and did everything, but thank you and greatly appreciate it. Wish Ron the best, wish Connie the best in the next year in her position, Terry in his retirement, and whoever's coming on the council, we look forward to working with those people and continuing with the work. So, with that, Mr. Gardner?
Yeah.
What's, what's your final word?
Merry Christmas. I'm sure I'll keep in touch.
And?
And the motion?
Motion to.
Motion to approve.
Adjourn, adjourn.
We'll put the words in your mouth, don't worry.
Right. Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Merry Christmas, everybody.